Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor, Skip Henderson. City manager, Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tim, and District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney, Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Welcome to the December 6th City Council meeting. As you can tell, the holidays are in full swing. Even counselors have a full calendar and are struggling to get here on time. So we do expect them in the next several minutes. But we will continue forward with some of the activities that take place here with council. We do begin all our meetings, and we'd like to begin this one the same way, is by inviting Pastor Mario Ray of Salt Church of Columbus, Georgia to the podium, and ask him if he wouldn't mind bringing a prayer to us this morning. Good morning, sir. If you would, there should be a button on there. If you'll hit that, I'll turn your light on. There you go.
So without further ado, let us pray. Father God, how good and how pleasant it is for brothers and sisters to dwell together in unity freely under your direction, Father God. Father, first and foremost, we would just like to say thank you. Thank you for provision, for understanding, for wisdom, for knowledge. Father God, we just ask that your presence will fill this place today, that our hearts be fixed on you, Father God, to allow us to decrease so that you can increase. So the decisions made today and talked about will be according to your will, your way, your purpose, your plan for this great city. Have your way in this place today. Strengthen our minds and our hearts and our spirits. We're delighted in you, oh God. Bless the leaders in here today, Father. Help them to push the vision that you have given them, God. Help the citizens here. Show them your love like you never had before. Lord, I pray for the spirit of integrity, humility, and I pray against the spirit of division. Unity, a unity that creates one nation, the under God mentality. Lord, have your way in this place. Do what only you can do. We love you, we honor you, we magnify your holy name. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Pastor, thank you, sir, for your service. And thank you, church, for sharing you with us this morning. Thank you now. If you would, please stand and join me in our pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
We gotta get to maintenance folks. They wait till the end of the year to play, to keep us on our toes. They moved the flag a little bit, so they couldn't find it. All right, and just a quick explanation to those that are here, why we do not conduct any official business until we have a physical quorum. We do have, I believe, Counselor Barnes and Counselor Huff that are virtual. Is that right? Tucker. Tucker, okay. Who are virtual, but unfortunately, we still can't conduct any official business. Okay.
He makes the hero.
All right. No, you're just that late. Okay, well, we will be able to conduct our business this morning. We will start with asking council if they had an opportunity to review the minutes. And if they have, we'll accept a motion to approve it. Motion second, approve the minutes from November 29th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, they are approved. And we got a couple of presentations today. We're gonna, we're gonna start with one that the city manager has asked if we could pull up. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning to each of you. I've got the first item on updates I want to bring up. We've got our Director of Airport here and want to share an appreciation. And I'm gonna ask Amber Clark to come forward to the podium and bring any guests that you have. Thank you for being here. And I've been flying out of the Columbus, Georgia airport. And I feel like I'm in one of the metro cities, Atlanta, somewhere else. You guys got it going on. And I wanna thank you for that.
Thank you, counsel. I would like to come here today. My name is Amber Clark. I'm the Director of the Columbus Airport. And I've brought Mr. Daniel Thomas, our Maintenance Manager, with us as well. In early October, the Columbus Airport met with the Mayor's Chief of Staff, the Deputy Director of Public Works, and the Forestry Administrator to discuss a few sections of trees that had been deemed obstacles in penetrating the western approach end of our main runway. These trees had become a safety hazard for approaching airports and were affecting the performance of our airlines and corporate traffic. The Forestry Division jumped into action immediately and were able to remove the few sections of trees within a couple of days. Not even two weeks later, the Federal Aviation Administration, or FAA, reported that a few other sections of trees were not properly reported in their system, and these three sections would need to be removed. Again, the Forestry Division was all over it. And they removed those trees within 24 hours of notice. What seems like a small task of simply removing trees was an integral part to the service of our community and our hometown airport. These actions of all involved increased safety, strengthened the commercial and corporate air operations, and assisted the Columbus Airport in fulfilling its mission to meet the air transportation and economic development needs of our community, its customers, and partners. For these actions and the wonderful partnership that we have formed, I, Amber Clark, and Daniel Thomas, on behalf of the Columbus Airport Commission, would like to formally recognize all who were involved by name and present this plaque as a small token of our sincere appreciation. It is because of individuals like these that Columbus does amazing. If I do not pronounce your name correctly, I apologize in advance. Just know it's a mistake for my head and not for my heart.
Amber, if you'd let me interrupt. I believe we have most of those folks here today. Michelle, if you and the forestry staff and anybody else that was involved with Eric, if y'all would come forward. I think the people of Columbus need to see some of our unsung heroes who work every day here in our community.
And Mayor, I'm glad you allowed me to bring it up. They need to go to work.
That's right.
All right, awesome. So I'd like to say thank you to the Public Works Forestry Division, Jabez Davis, Terry Evans, Matt McLean, Austin Lindander, Jack Owens, Frederick Miller, Freddie Williams, James Walden, Johnny Clark, Ralph McCoy, John Newsome, Eric Williams, Joe Fitzpatrick, and Eric Gunsauer. From the Public Works Internal Services, Brandon Hatcher, Corey Jacobs. From the Public Works Rainwater Division, Tommy Beecham, Glenn Strickland, Gerald Fuller, Andrew Lunsford. And from Public Works, Drell Short and Michelle Brown-Mang. And of course, our Mayor's Chief of Staff, Josh Eardeswell. Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Michelle, you wanna say a few words? And when you finish, I think it'd be good to let us know who these folks are. So if you would come by and let them state their name, too.
Absolutely. I have very little to say, other than I truly appreciate them. They always do such a good job. And little things like this make such a big deal to them. Having them come forward and showing appreciation for something that they've done means a lot to us, and I thank you all for doing that.
Eric, you start.
Eric Ganzar, Forestry Administrator. And these gentlemen are the best in the state of Georgia.
My name is Brandon Hatcher. I'm Internal Services and Public Works. And I'm just thanking these guys for giving us the opportunity to get out there and get a little bit of field work in. We appreciate it, guys.
My name is Corey Jacobs, Internal Services, GIS Technician. It was really just a learning experience for me, but, you know.
Very good.
Good morning, Johnny Clark, Forest Division Tree Trimmer.
Good morning, Joe Fitzpatrick, Forest, Maintenance and Work.
It's David Forrest, Department Supervisor.
Good morning, Terry Evans, Forest Department Supervisor.
Good morning, Fred Miller, Crew Leader. That was pretty fun.
Good morning, I'm Eric Williams, Forest Department, Equipment Operator 1.
Good morning, I'm Ralph McCoy. I'm a part of Forestry Division. And I'd just like to say thank y'all for giving us this opportunity. And that's it.
Good morning, Freddie Williams, Crew Leader, Tree Trimmer.
Good morning, Andrew Lunsford. Thank you, guys.
Good morning, James.
James Water, Crew Leader, Forest.
Good morning, Gerald Fuller, Rainwater.
Matt McLean, Forest Crew Leader.
Tommy Beauchamp, Rainwater Manager. I'd also like to say, the inner work that we do within the city and its entities, it's a great way for us building networks and working together to reach that common goal of improving everybody's situation. And thank y'all for the opportunity to come out there and help, instead of hiring somebody to do it.
Well, listen, we appreciate y'all. And I think it's important that... You know, I wanna, I wanna thank Amber and the folks at the airport for thinking enough of what y'all do as part of that partnership to recognize you publicly. And it's good that we do that, because people at home have no idea the work that y'all do. I mean, this was a significant initiative that had to be undertaken in order to keep the planes flying into Columbus. Beyond that, though, every time we have one of these big storms, every time we have high winds, these are the folks that are out there making sure that the streets are cleared. They're making sure that nobody's injured by any trees that are distressed, that have fallen over the rainwater, that if it doesn't go through. Some of our, some of our manholes get a little clogged sometimes from people putting wrong stuff in there. They have to make sure they control that as well. So it's good that they have an opportunity to be acknowledged for what they do every day. So thank you.
And so, and Mayor, and let me just thank them again, and thank Amber for acknowledging them. Because, you know, these are, there are so many other employees, just like the ones standing here, that we don't ever see. We don't know their names, but they're out there grinding every day, getting it done. And, and when great things happen, oftentimes, the leadership, the division managers get the accolades, the praise. But these are, without them, there would be no Drell Short, and Michelle Brown, and any of us. They make Columbus what it is. And yet, many of us don't know their names, and we don't see them. And I want to express that appreciation to them and to Amber for highlighting them for the great work that they do.
Counselor Woodson?
Yes, thank you. City Manager took the words right out of my mouth. I think he was hitting my mind at the same time. But I did wanna say personally, thank you. It's true, usually, we, we see the department heads, but we don't see the backbone. And I'm very proud to say that the city of Columbus has an outstanding employees and do a great job. And many times, it's a thankless job. Thank you. And I did want to, Ms. Amber, just to give you a little thing. I wanted to recognize Daniel Thomas. I know Daniel since he was a little boy. He used to come to our candy store called Kids and Things. And he grew up with my kids. And I knew he worked for the city, and he loved the city. He loved Public Works. He would wear his uniform, very proud. He'll go somewhere and shoulders up high, chest out. I work for Public Works, and very proud. And to some surprise today, to see him here representing the airport. It's a very, really nice and rewarding. Because since the beginning, I've always told Isaiah, "Yeah, we gotta work on our employees. They need to climb up. They need to express and move on." Because that shows the partnership and the good work that they do for the city. So to everyone here, and to Daniel, I'm very proud of you. To everyone, I'm very proud. Thank you very much for being such awesome citizens in Columbus, Georgia. You're the ones that make that little app that we receive that Columbus is cool. It's cool because of you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. One more round of applause, and thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, if you all would allow me to do one quick item on my agenda. Billy Turner is sitting out there, and he was here last week with Philip Clayton, and did a presentation on restoring locks and dams on the Appalachia Cola Flint, and wanted a resolution encouraging our congressional delegation to request the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers dedicate Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act funds to make necessary repairs to the Appalachia-Chattahoochee-Flint River system.
Motion second, approve. Any discussion? And by the way, I will mention again that Counselors Garrett, Huff, and Tucker are virtual, so their votes will be counted in any action we take today. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? I assume those three counselors are in favor. They are.
And thank you, Billy, for...
Billy, thank you. All right, we had another presentation scheduled for the Rees Road Elementary. And I'm not sure they are here. It's a partnership with Edge Church. And it's, it's an outstanding academic and environmental partnership. So if they show up later in the meeting, we will give them the opportunity to present. Otherwise, we will reschedule. All right. I think that's all on my agenda. With that, we'll move to the City Attorney. Hit your lights, sir.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Again, this morning, we've got a fairly short business agenda. Some first readings. I'll call over Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge on this first item and the second one. The first one is to create a new entertainment district at Highside Market at their confined property, their location at First and 13th. Ms. Hodge?
So good morning, Mayor and Counsel. Again, this is establishing the ability to have an entertainment district, and then identifying the bound, defining the boundaries for Highside Market specifically. And so, this is the boundary. It's one parcel at 211 13th Street. And what that will allow them to do is to, this is an amendment to Chapter 3. It allows carryout basically within the boundaries of that parcel. For alcohol, it's limited to one 16-ounce shatterproof container. Consumption has to be within the boundaries of this entertainment district from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. It defines that Highside Cotton LLC will be the responsible party. So they will notify us of what the container that's allowed inside their entertainment district will be, so that the police department is able to know what that is, so they can enforce the rules of an entertainment district.
Okay. Counselor Tucker? Oh, Tom?
This resolution that we have here, excuse me, speaks to more than just the Highside District. It lays out some of the rules and regs for all of the, all of the entertainment districts. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Well, it's a guideline that can be used for other entertainment districts if we get some more that request to be designated. But if you pass this, it will only apply to Highside Market. Others can be added in, come into the class of entertainment districts later in the future. So, you know, this is the framework that you can use for any entertainment district.
Well, one of the questions that I have is that in, in this resolution, it says that the, let me, let me see if I can find it now. It's talking about, in item number two, it's talking about the containers. And it says, identify the printed sticker or other method of identification required by the party designated as the responsible party for the entertainment district. I understand in Highside Market, that is a very small contained area. And I understand that there currently is an owner of that property. And I am assuming that someone, I'm not sure who, has designated that ownership as the responsible party. As I look at other districts that we have been talking about, Midtown Commons, that may also be a small contained district if they come to us and ask to be an entertainment district. And they, that property is owned by a single company, a single person. But there are restaurants and so forth going in there that will not be owned by that company, but perhaps leased to that company. One of my concerns with this language is the downtown area. There is no responsible entity for all of downtown area. And someone said to me, "Well, Uptown." No, Uptown is not responsible for all of Uptown. And so, I'm real concerned about this language. And first of all, how, what, how does that apply to districts that have multiple independent businesses? And who designates the responsible party?
You wanna comment? I mean, it's, I assume anybody that sells alcohol as a licensee is gonna be a responsible party in multi-licensed areas.
Well, the responsible party would be the one who is requesting that area to be an entertainment district. It would be outside the, the business. It's more on the common area. And I think maybe Assistant City Attorney Lucy Shuffield might have a comment as well.
Come on around, Ms. Shuffield.
Because this would be allowing an open container outside of the business.
Yeah, I understand that. But this says that the container has to be approved by the responsible party for the, and I wanna know, how is that responsible party designated? And who does the designation?
Responsible party is designated, if you will look for Highside Market down in paragraph nine, the responsible party, Highside Cotton LLC, is designated. So at the time the group comes and asks for the district to be approved, for those boundaries to be added down in this paragraph nine of the ordinance, they will also have to designate a responsible party that's acceptable to counsel.
So the entertainment district designates their own responsible party?
Well, it's up to counsel. It's in the ordinance. So if you don't approve of who they've designated, you deny the request.
Well, I, it looks to me, and perhaps I'm, you know, looking at it too closely, that the first couple of items, first couple of paragraphs in this ordinance deals with the entire spectrum. It doesn't deal with just Highside Market. And as I said, I understand Highside Market, because it is a very enclosed area. But there's some of these areas that we've been talking about that are not that way. And I, and I am assuming that when they come to us, if, if someone comes to us, for example, with the downtown entertainment district, right now, the party that has come to us about the entertainment district downtown is a counselor. Does the counselor decide who the responsible party is? I don't know. I'm, I'm real concerned about the way this is worded. And you know that I'm try, I am a wordsmith, and I try to do that. But that's one of my, one of my concerns.
Well, the ordinance works as a template. But once you get down to the paragraph nine, you're adopting a specific entertainment district, and only that...
And are you telling me that these other eight paragraphs will not apply to other...
No, they will. But you have, you will not, they don't apply now, because those districts aren't approved. You would not approve the new districts until you had a boundary that you approved of and a responsible party you approved of.
I understand that. My question is, if this is something like Uptown, like downtown Columbus, who decides who the responsible party is?
Ultimately, counsel before adopting that amendment to the ordinance has to accept it. I mean...
Well, somebody has to come to us and say, "This is, this is the, this is the responsible party."
Right.
So somebody has to step up.
Somebody, somebody has to be designated as the, as the entity that designates this as the responsible party.
Right.
I, I just think that, that, that language needs to be looked at to determine how that, how that goes. One of the...
Hang on, let's...
I, I, I'm also, well, that, that'll, that'll do it for now. I think I've muddied the water enough for now.
Counselor Woodson?
Yes, I, I think I understand what Counselor Thomas is saying. And, and I'm just gonna use an example to see if I understood what you were saying. Let's say if Uptown, somebody, a business in Uptown, wanted to do this. Let's say the loft, I'm gonna just use the loft as an example. The loft comes and says they wanna be an entertainment district. Would then that, would that make them the responsible party? Because they're applying for an entertainment district for the whole Uptown area. Is that what you were saying, Judy? Because there's multiple businesses there. But in Uptown, because they pay a membership and they pay extra taxes, not one business can come. It has to come before, it has to come to us through Uptown. An individual business couldn't do it.
Where does it say that?
It's, it's in there. That's the reason why, because that's the way Uptown operates. Anything that happens in Uptown, they have to get permission from Uptown and the Business Board. People can't put like signs up there. They can't do certain things. They're regulated. And then people in Uptown tax themselves additional funding for cleanup and for security. So in the Uptown District, that's a very unique situation, because the entertainment district can't go in there unless Uptown approves it. That was the whole debate. That's why it wasn't passed, because the businesses wanted it. Most of the businesses wanted, with exception of maybe one or two. But Uptown is the representation of that area. And that's the reason it didn't pass, because Uptown would not take that responsibility. And that, when you're talking about multiples, I think that's, that's the situation here. And on this ordinance, numbered, it's like, number nine is the one that councils determines, yes, you approve it, or no, you don't. Yes, you approve the applicant. Because the responsible party, I would think it would be the person that applies for it, that would become the responsible party, because they're making the petition for it. But I don't see Uptown coming anytime soon, at all. And if they ever do, I don't see it.
When you're specific bound... When your specific bound, district is considered, that's when council determines what is an appropriate responsible party and what are appropriate boundaries for that district. And that's, you know, you can take into account things like an Uptown District would include a lot of public property, whereas these other projects do not. And so they're factors, but the whole point is to consider each district on its own merits and then make sure that there's a boundary and a designated responsible party before council approves that district.
Okay. Ms. City Manager, did you have something that you wanted to add?
I, I did, but I, I was going to pass on, pass on that. But I, I was just going to comment beyond what I was initially going to say. Is that I, I think we can look at best practice in other communities. I have been to so many communities where there are entertainment districts. I, I mentioned the one I went to in, just outside of Jackson, Mississippi, Richland. I mean, I don't know the responsible party, but I can name city after city with entertainment district. What do they do? I mean, we just, we, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. This is, it's not rocket science, you know? You know, if there's a best practice and they've been doing it for the last 20, 25 years and it worked, maybe we should take a look at what they're doing. And so I, I would just say, we don't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel. It's, it's, it's been done all over the country.
Okay. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I understand what you're saying, and the, and the way I look at this, this part can be a little bit vague to give the entities a broad perspective that they have to fit into. And then they create the details when they come to us. Like, it, it appears that Highside Market has brought the details. And this is who's going to be the responsible party, these are the boundaries, these are this, this, this is this. And so they've, they've gone through one through eight and shown that they, they meet all those criteria and then some. And so they're good to go. If businesses in the Uptown area want to create an entertainment district, then they would have to do with Highside. They're going to have a little bit more challenges, like just the challenges that you laid out. And I don't necessarily believe that it has to go through Uptown because there's some members of Uptown that came before this body and told us they're not in favor of it. And so it may be, the businesses come together and create a, you know, an Uptown entertainment district on their own. And, you know, I don't know how they want to structure it when they come before us. They can figure that out. That's, I don't think that's our job. I think the businesses in the Uptown who, if they want to have an entertainment district, then they can figure it out, and then they can bring it to us. And if we like how they figured it out, we can accept it. If we don't like how they figured it out, then we can say, uh, go back to the drawing board and try again. That's, that's the way I read all of that.
Okay, Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to add to the conversation. I think there's other boxes that need to be checked in this, too. And I think Deputy City Manager Hodge, if you would address some of the other measures, because I think this is not, they, they have to come before this body, which Highside has already come before this body, I believe. And they have to present their case. So if anybody else wants to create an entertainment district, there's going to have to be a, a first hearing on it, and we get a chance to ask all these questions. It's going to have to be explained before it's approved. But I think that this ordinance is, is the general ordinance, and they would just be listed, I'm, I'm assuming under nine, they would be listed along with this ordinance, whoever the, becomes the other possible entertainment districts that are out there. But I, I think there's still check, check marks or boxes that have to be checked along the way with documentation or approvals, whether it's with finance or business or some of these other departments. It's not just the approval today, there's, there's other things that I believe is going to transpire as well. That protects a city and, you know, and so everybody knows what they need to do. My concern is, I hear Counselor Thomas, she makes some valid points. I, I like what City Manager says about best practices. Counselor Crabbe touched on some things as well. But, you know, that should give us an opportunity. There's a place, I'm just going to throw this out there. One of, one of the, I guess, management companies, it is a management company that has asked for a possible entertainment district, will have multiple owners, but it's in a contained area. I, I'm not sure if all those properties are, who owns them? Or if they're all leased by one individual? But at some point in time, those type of questions are going to come up, and we need to cover that in general as a blanket because in theory, or in reality, Highside Market within six months could be sold, and you might have multiple owners, it might be split up with multiple owners. We don't know, but we created an entertainment district that's still, is still there. We may have, you know, the, over there where the fetch and some of those places, there's some really nice things happening over there with breweries that are going on, which it makes sense in what we're talking about for people to be able to enjoy their, their beverages at the same time. But you've got some dist, a little distance in between. And if you, and potentially multiple property owners as well. So I, I, I would like to see what City Manager brings back, but that should give us, when these entities come before us, and they have to come before us, it should give us enough time to, to look through this and, and to determine, ask the questions, determine if it's the right thing or not. So, and Deputy City Manager Hodge, if you would, you may want to touch some more on some of those things I just mentioned and how, and just kind of walk the council through it, because this, this will be the procedure in the future if we approve this ordinance.
Okay. Counselor Thomas?
It seems to me that items one through eight in this ordinance apply to anyone seeking an entertainment district. And item nine is specifically about Highside. I think I would feel more comfortable if these were two separate ordinances, that we have one ordinance that has the, the, the things that apply to any group that comes before us. And then we have Highside that has met those things and, and has come before us. But I, I, I just have a, a little twitch. And, and I think that, that the, the best practices is absolutely where we ought to go on this. There's some, there's some things in here that, you know, will need explaining to people. And I, I don't know if that's Deputy City Manager's Hodge's responsibility or someone else. But for example, you can't, you, you will not be able under this ordinance to take a can of beer on pedal pub unless it is somehow or another labeled by somebody that, it's an unbreakable, non-shattering, shatterproof. I'm also concerned about, you know, some of the other kinds of things. One of the things that came to my mind, we allow golf carts in downtown Columbus as long as they meet certain traffic entities. Will they be allowed to drive on Broadway with, with this? You know, I don't know. But I, I, I just, I want to, I want us to be sure that we're doing what we need to do as, as Counselor Davis said, that we make sure that we have the proper rules in place, and then let's, let's approve as many of these as we can. I think Highside is, is a great place to do this. They're self-contained and all of those other kinds of things. But as Counselor Davis said, suppose they sell that land, that property next week. I just want us to be sure that we're, we're where we ought to be. And, and please don't take my comments as being opposed to entertainment districts. I am not. I think that they're something that would, will enhance our city. And if item number, if paragraph number nine were by itself.
Can I make a suggestion on that? We could make a section two, just a separate section of the ordinance where paragraph nine is located, and that could be used in future district requests. Just make this a separate section in the ordinance. And then we'll bump the other section down to number three at the end. But that way, at least you keep it contained in one document, you know what you're talking about.
Well, as long as, as long as those portions of this ordinance that apply, that will ultimately apply to whomever wants to have a, an entertainment district, I'm okay with, with that. And maybe the separation is what, is what we need. Just to be sure that we know where we are and, and how it's working. I, and if I need to make that motion, or, I don't know, Mr. City Attorney, can you do it without a motion?
We can do that, just a clerical change, and make this a section two instead of paragraph nine. Then any future districts that come forth with a different responsible party in the future, it'll have the same one through eight framework and a different section two, depending on the boundary.
Okay.
It'll just be a separate code section in the Muni Code. There'll be one section that has the requirements and one that has the approved entertainment district.
Bingo.
All right. All right, well, good. Yeah, you know, I think the important thing is that staff, when they bring this, especially through the city attorney's office, that's the way the process works. They vet it, they put something together, and then this is how it should shake out. We get it addressed at the table quickly. Because I think what concerns me is, as we continue to delay and continue to kick these things down the road, there really is an aspect of economic viability with regards to, even something as silly as it sounds, some of the conventions and reunions, they ask questions about stuff that's allowed and, and how, how your downtown is. So, so yeah, I think this, that's, I think it's a valid point. It's a good, good place to bring it up, get it fixed quickly, and then get it back and move on.
My intention is to make sure that we have clear rules that everybody can follow, both the people who are trying to get the entertainment district, our law enforcement personnel know what to do, our business department knows what to do, all of those kinds of things. And then, you know, let's, let's have at it. I, I think a Highside Entertainment District is, will be a fun thing. And I think that we can do that with, with clarity that I think this one does, has just a little, little glitch.
Well, it is, listen, ask Haley. We are getting more and more interest in our, in our city for, for some of these visitors. And a lot of them are coming in just from C V, C V B as tourists. Ms. Hughley, I've got you in queue, but I'm going to go to the counselors and let you wrap it up when we get to that. Is that okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. To address a couple of the things you brought up about the consumption of alcohol in motor vehicles, it is, it is number eight, that there's no consumption. And so I would think that that would be for the, for the golf carts, too, because it's a motor vehicle. And then secondly, about Counselor Davis's point about what happens if it were, Highside Market was to be sold, is there language in this ordinance that if it, if it's sold to another entity, the new entity has to come and reapply and be accepted as, as a new entertainment district?
Right. And currently, well, not as a new entertainment district, but at least come and get the change of responsible party approved by council.
Okay, so that's in here somewhere.
If you want to set up an administrative procedure where that can be changed without coming back to council, that would be another option, but this currently would require it to come back to council.
I think, I think we'd like it to come back to council. I mean, I don't think we want to be over heavy-handed on businesses. But, but with something like this, I think it could get out of hand if we just, if we didn't keep some stewardship over it.
Keep in mind, any potential buyer, it's a business decision. They know the, they're going to do the title search, and they're going to find out all the laws that impact that particular parcel. And they'll make a determination if they want to buy that.
Right, that's why I want it in this ordinance.
Okay.
So that they know from the, from the get-go that there are certain things that they're going to have to do, you know, that they're not just going to be able to walk, waltz in. And this is going to, you know, they're going to get the same thing that the current owner has. They're going to have to follow the same guidelines that the owner did in order to get this designation.
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Woodson?
Well, Counselor Crabbe already covered it, but to simplify it a little bit easier, Lucy, is it possible just to, to put nine B or C whatever on there that states that if the ownership is transferred, they must reapply? So they don't have to search through it here? Because I heard Counselor Thomas loud and clear, and that's why I wanted to say it, but Crabbe already said it. But to make it even easier, let it be a line item on here, so that.
Let's get, let's just get a one-line amendment to section two then, saying, any, any ownership change will require a newly designated responsible party approved by council or something to that effect. But go ahead, you can go ahead and vote on that amendment.
That's fine.
Motion.
All right. Motion and second for the amendment. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I just wanted to say something, too, because it seems lately there's tension among us. When we all bring something and staff is working on it, it's, it's, sometimes it's a draft, sometimes it's an ordinance like this. I, I think it's good to have these conversations that we're having because we make decisions and we bring things on our own. We might call one, another, one or two people, but that's it. So I think it's a healthy discussion that we're having on what would go for the future. The only thing I would say is, while we're trying to ensure everything's in place, make sure that Columbus continues to be a friendly business place. Because right now, the rumors are, it's very hard to open a business in Columbus, Georgia. And we need to kind of work on, on that. If 2025 is what we're going for, and we want to market our city, we don't want businesses to come here and say, "Oh, I don't want to go to Columbus. It's, it's too tough to get something done." And I'm saying this because I was at an event yesterday, and someone came up to me and said, "Hey, can you help me try to figure out how you open a business in Columbus, because I hear it's real hard?" It shouldn't be that, and we should not get that reputation. Just food for thought, just to keep it in mind.
And as a response to that, I know that City Manager and I talk frequently, as does staff, and a couple of things we're looking forward to under the new city hall, having all of the steps that are required for somebody to get licensed right in the same location, which is a great first step. And on top of that, what we're doing is we, we're looking at all of the steps and requirements, both local and state, and see which ones we can have an impact on. And City Manager, matter of fact, has said that, you know, we've got to find a way to get out of the way. And, you know, technology allows us to do so many things. To me, it's, it's, it's hard to imagine that we can't send an applicant into one intake area, fill out all of the necessary forms, hit send, and it goes to every organization, every department in our government that needs to say grace over it. And then we expedite the thing that a guy's in business in a week instead of now three months, four months, I heard some people talk about. So we're fixing that. That will be fixed.
And I just thought I'd just mention it, and because I have felt the tension myself. But that's what we were all elected for, to bring things to the table, discuss it, and come up with a finished product.
Yep.
So just want to say thank, and I just wanted to clarify that and let you know that, that we have to be very careful if we're shooting for 2025 and we want to develop and we want to grow Columbus, we want people to know. I saw that article that Tucker Sensus about Columbus being cool, but let, yeah, you have to really read it. I saw that article that Tucker census about Columbus being cool, but let, yeah, you have to really read it. They said we were the third largest city in Georgia. It's in that print, and it's actually the second largest. So we really need to ensure that the positives and the correct information is marketing our great city. And I have, what's another note? Can I take a real quick thing?
Well, we, we have one other counselor queued up. Let me just stay tight and we'll, all right, well. Counselor Crabbe to this.
Just very quickly about opening a business in Columbus. I, do we have a checklist for them? We do. Okay, because that, I think that would help a lot if they use them.
But I would, but I would tell you that that check.
Because some of the businesses I've talked to, it's like the problems that they had is they didn't, they didn't follow a checklist. They, they did some things and it created problems later.
We, we have to continue to work on a way to fix that. And, and truthfully, and staff doesn't like me saying this, but sometimes that checklist is like following a moth's flight. It just, it goes, there's no direct route. And we need to get as the crow flies, not as the moth flies. Mr. Hughley?
Well, Mayor, a lot has been said since I was gonna make the comment, but it goes back to Counselor Thomas. And, thank you. She kind of outlined separating out Highside and, and the regs, if you will. And then the city attorney quickly figured out how to fix it with a couple of sentences or two or another paragraph. And then Counselor Crabbe talked about, you know, bringing it back to council. And, you know, I just wanted to say thank you, and I like everything I've heard. So, and then even to Counselor Woodson talking about the difficulty in doing business in Columbus, and yet there is a checklist. And, and, and so, you know, I thought about Counselor Davis. I know he has done business in other communities. And, and I've heard you say, and I've heard, and Pam Hodge, Deputy City Manager knows, other business, people who are doing business outside of Columbus and they do business in Columbus, they think Columbus is a breath of fresh air, Counselor Davis. And I've heard you say it. And, and so while we are wanting to work to be better than we are today, Mayor and Counselor Woodson, I, I want you to know that we hear from our locals who are doing business in Florida and other communities in, in the metro Atlanta area. We are many steps ahead of them, Counselor Davis. I see you doing that, you know? And so I, I did want to say that. And, but I, I think that perception locally is, is for some. And, and I told you, as I think back to what, you know, Counselor Thomas and how, you know, working to support Entertainment District for Highside and others. You know, I was talking to the mayor and the mayor protem about the work session at the end of January, January 31st. And, and, and it goes to what Counselor Woodson was saying, that, you know, I got a call from, and, and I'll just call his name, I don't think he'll man, Jason Gamache, you know? Because we heard about the Rialto and, and, and he wanted to provide some clarification. It's not what was stated and how it was stated and so forth. And he says, come down with me and get on my golf cart, give me 30 minutes. And I did that. And, and, and just, we went riding up second, and he pointed out things to me. And then I won't name all the buildings and facilities. But he says, that building, you know, and, and I really did not know his level of involvement. And this guy is a young guy. He's investing in Uptown and our community, and he is doing so much. And then I thought about Chris Woodruff, a young guy, we're talking under 40, who are investing so much. And then you think about W.C. Bradley and what Pace Halter is doing. You think about Chris Whitman, what he's doing in the Panhandle. I mean, these are people just, you know, they're putting their all into making Columbus that cool city the best it can be. And, and I was just blown away with Jason Gamache. So I came back to the mayor and I said, you know what I'd like to do for the work session? And I hope you can spare an entire day on January 31st. But, you know, and I've got Deputy City Manager Hodge and Deputy City Manager Goodwin working on it. But I want to come here and we all get on a bus. And we stop by Jason Gamache and pick Jason up and say, and Jason, and I've had this conversation with Jason, give the council members and the staff, the leadership, the same tour and share the same information with them you shared with me, and you're going to blow them away. I just didn't know. And shame on me. And I said to Jason, Jason, you know, either, you know, you've not communicated well or we have not studied well. But just awesome, right? And so, you know, kind of like the intra-city visit we did. But I want you on a bus a whole day on the work session on January 31st. And so we stop at Jason, pick him up and give him an hour and a half or whatever is needed. And then we go pick up Chris Woodruff. And take us over to High, tell us what you're doing, and we're on the bus or off the bus. Tell us what you're doing and what you're investing. And then we go pick up Pace Halter and W.C. Bradley. Tell us what's all this going on over by the Indigo, and you've done the Rapids apart. Tell us what, you know, what, what's going on. And we could say, buddy, tell us what you're doing. And then we go to Chris Whitman and, and so the whole day is what I'd ask you for. And because it, it blows my mind that we have young entrepreneurs investing a hell of a lot of money. And, and all they're trying to do is just do business in Columbus, and we got to help them. And so, Mayor, I just wanted to aggress, but say thank you to Counselor Thomas. Because, I mean, she just summed up about Highside Market. I mean, that's what these guys are looking for, some help. And, and even I told them to bring Pedal Pub back, a young guy, I don't know that guy. I don't know his name. But bring Pedal Pub and, you know, I mean, just someone who wants to do something and make a difference in Columbus. I won't leave it at that, Mayor, because I could talk longer. But I, I am excited about momentum. I am excited about young people investing in our city. And, and we just got to help Counselor Woodson make it easy for them to spend money. And, and that's all I'm advocating for.
Counselor Davis?
I want to yield to the Deputy City Manager, let her finish and I'll, I'll share my comments.
Well, we've got two other counselors in queue. So Counselor Thomas?
Ms. Hodge, we do an ordinance like this and like the, the next one on our agenda. Do we run this by the Columbus Police Department and the Fire Department to make sure that what we're saying are things that they can enforce and that they can work with and that they will follow up on?
Yes, the Police Department has been completely involved in this process as well as the next one. They're part of our committee that has reviewed everything.
Good. And I, I know that when the Pedal Pub guys were talking about traveling on Broadway and, and Front Street, on Broadway particularly, it might be difficult for an ambulance to get down if, if the Pedal Pub is there, whatever. So I'm hoping that the Fire EMS also has a chance to comment on some of this to the Deputy City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Counselor Crabbe?
I just wanted to make a quick comment to Mr. Hughley. I think that bus tour would be a lot more fun than the good, bad, and ugly bus tour. I'd like to focus on some of the positive things that are happening in Columbus, Georgia. Thank you.
And just to add to that, I've already reached out. I have a list of about 10, and positive comment, I have confirmation from at least six right now, so. I call it the Positive Bus Tour. High interest in participating in that.
It's an economic development bus tour. Counselor Woodson?
Yes, and I'm glad that you met with Josh and, and Crabbe knows this too, because he reaches out to her, he reaches out to me, he reaches out to Glenn and, and Bruce. And they do a lot in the community. And when I say sometimes, sometimes it's difficult to do business, those are some of the key people that are saying we need to work on our process a little bit better. I'm not saying it just because I got up this morning and, and said, hey, we need to. It's because people like them who are trying to develop and bring new, new things into Columbus, they're the ones that are saying we need to, you know, fix the process a little bit better. And I know I won't be in council, but I do plan on doing some other things in the community. And I love to be invited to that tour, even though I know a lot, half of what they're already doing. Because I get the calls. I get the calls from the Garrets and Gamache and the new family that bought the, oh, I forgot, the Gretchen house. I get those phone calls. I get those conversations. And I know who they're talking to around this table because they do want to help, because they do want to grow. They have some new innovated ideas. But we also have to change some of our process to meet their needs. So I like the, the comment that Crabbe said, making it the positivity tour. Because when we do a bus tour, we said the good, the bad, and the ugly. So not to say something new and improved or possibility or something, it's a great name for that tour. Thank you.
Ms. Hodge, can you continue?
So I, I think Counselor Davis has been asking, there will be a process for any entertainment district. They will be required to meet with us to determine the container that has to be acceptable to the Police Department in order for them to enforce for an entertainment district. So there is a process after the ordinance is considered that will complete that process.
Okay, Counselor Davis?
Yeah. Well, I, I just want to say, what I'd like to add to this is focus on the real estate transaction transfer side because that's, you know, over time, different things are gonna happen where you have one owner, two owners, multiple owners, modifications, maybe additions to these districts, things like that could take place. Maybe some, somebody wants to, they want to opt out, I don't know. But, you know, if, if staff, the city manager could focus on some of those things while y'all do some of your work. Because I see those things happening. I don't think we're gonna iron that out here at the table today, but when you do best practices and all, that could possibly happen. So we want to, want to make sure we're covering all bases. The, and, and I want to echo your comments about our city being business-friendly. It is. And I want to thank all those who are involved on the city side and making it happen because they do a good job. You know, business is not an easy thing to do, but there's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of entities. Sometimes it gets, most of the time I talk to people and it gets difficult, it's on the state side. Or it's with a, a real estate side of a transaction, trying to make all of that work. You know, leasing a building and things like that, there's a lot of utilities, things like that that may, you know, that's not a city matter. But as far as, and I, a, someone who has multiple businesses in multiple states, Columbus is pretty easy, if not the easiest I've ever dealt with. And I say that, I say that wholeheartedly because it is. And I, now, look, I will say you can always improve and get better. And, and there's times in where people don't realize it, but the city's down, the city manager going through COVID, down on key people that can make things happen. And so, yeah, it may take a little bit longer to make it happen. But let me tell you what, when you have to get in line and, and make appointments and wait months in some of these other cities, and you can't get anybody on the phone, and you can't even see them, and they may or may not show up. I mean, it kind of changes your mind. You see a little bit different perspective in here in Columbus. I mean, it's pretty, Columbus is pretty, from our city side is, we do a good job. But like I said, we could, we, you could, there's always room for improvement and get better. So I just did want to say that you're, you're right, the city manager.
No, I, I think, I think by and large, we, we, we do a good job. But, but to Counselor Woodson's point, we still hear from people in our local business community. And these are individuals who are investing in their hometown. And so I think that when they tell us that there might be some opportunity to streamline this process, we absolutely need to listen to them. And, and matter of fact, I will lift up one of the stars of the city employee, city government that, that has been, I don't know how she gets done what she's been getting done, but I see Yvonne Ivy in the back. And we, the city manager and I just received a, an email from one of those local developers who was, and, and as with earlier this morning with the forestry, we don't often have people, I mean, they'll, they're quick to criticize, but we don't get a lot of pats on the back. And, and he just went on and on about the efforts of Ms. Yvonne Ivy and her department on, during a period of time when she probably shouldn't have even really been working. And so we have excellent employees that go the extra mile trying to make sure that these things are taken care of. But we can improve. Yvonne, thank you. Any further questions for Ms. Hodge?
All right, we're gonna bring this back, the Highside Entertainment District as amended. Bring it back next week. It'll be on second reading for a vote. All right, ladies, stand by because we're moving on to the hearing on the tour service alcohol permits or the Pedal Pub business at its own first reading also. Other various conditions in the ordinance, including half a million dollars liability insurance. But Ms. Hodge, you want to, you want to give them an overview, overview of this, please?
Sure. So this is an alternative to the entertainment district that the tourist service, service vehicle would have been included in. So this is to allow a tourist service vehicle to operate in Columbus, and it would amend a certain section. The definition has been changed slightly from what was presented in the prior meetings. It's a vehicle owned by a business licensed in Columbus, which is in the business of carrying passengers for hire or offering to carry passengers for hire through the streets in the Uptown Zoning District. And this is the name that we use for the district that the Pedal Pub can operate. It is not an entertainment district, it is for the Pedal Pub specifically, when the primary purpose of such a vehicle is not transportation, but touring and sightseeing. So this is what we're identifying as the district that the Pedal Pub can operate. Now, they can operate without alcohol. This would be the district where they could operate with alcohol. And so there is, in order to have alcohol on this vehicle, there would be a permit required annually to operate. It is a thousand-dollar permit, which is similar to other types of permits that we have for like non-traditional restaurants, those kind of things. So this is a similar fee, permit fee for that. Proof of insurance of at least 500,000. That if there is alcohol allowed on that vehicle, they will be required to check the identification of all the passengers when alcohol is permitted. They'll be responsible for the vehicle and the passengers. No open containers shall leave the tourist service vehicle, tour service vehicle. And if there are more than five violations of this ordinance in a calendar year, it will result in the non-renewal of the alcohol permit. They could still continue to operate without alcohol. But this would provide for any violations over five to have a non-renewal of the alcohol permit itself.
Okay, Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I understand the Pedal Pub is mostly people pedaling, that's how it gets its movement. But isn't there some sort of motor on it that helps? And if so, how do we get around Georgia State law saying you can't have an open container in a motor vehicle?
This only applies to the passengers and so, and it's for tourist purposes. So it's not like a closed motor vehicle where someone's driving.
I understand, but is, is there potentially an issue with Georgia, well, not us, that since you can't have an open container in a motorized vehicle?
You have a chauffeur, actually, you can.
You can? Yeah, I just looked it up and said you could. Yeah, I just looked it up, it said you could. Okay.
If you're in, if you're in a limousine or a chauffeur vehicle, you can.
Yes, you can. Uh-huh, okay. Thank you.
All right, Counselor, um, Davis?
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, while we're talking about this, I just want to ask the question if you will, uh, just kind of expand on liability and legal matters pertaining to the seat or anything like that, whether it, it, you know, the nature of the business is what it is. They function on streets, and there's possibility of accidents and people getting hurt. But would you speak to the legal side of it, and the liabilities, and the city's part in it, all that? Would you just kind of address those things?
Well, as far as the liability standpoint, the owner will have to have five hundred thousand per occurrence in liability insurance coverage. This is the same sort of thing that's required when you have a limousine or taxi service. And, um, you know, if somebody is injured, uh, normally it's sorted out as an insurance matter between the private entities. The, uh, city, of course, has county immunity and, uh, is not going to be liable for an occurrence, um, with a private vehicle. But we certainly want people protected. That's why with this type of activity, we require such high amounts, at least a half a million in liability coverage, in case something happens, and the private parties, uh, can deal with it through their attorneys and insurance companies. But, I mean, that's it in a nutshell. The, the county is not, you know, a party to the, to the, uh, contract, but the county does have immunity in this type situation if something occurs, because the county is not operating a motor vehicle in this scenario.
And I'm assuming that the business, people that want to participate and partake can be, and they choose to, to do this form of entertainment, I'm sure that they're going to have to sign off. They understand the liability, they understand the risk of what could possibly happen.
Yeah, absolutely. They're going to have to provide proof, a certificate of insurance, for at least this minimum amount, and finance and revenue. Ms. Ivy, they're used to looking at certificates of insurance to make sure people have what they need to get the license.
Mr. City Manager, one thing that, uh, is just coming to mind on this, just, I know there's, you know, when you look at situations throughout the country dealing with this type business, you know, things happen. I mean, it just happens. Uh, people get hurt. But this is new in our community. And we, we don't want to be like just everybody else, and just, you know, kind of just brush off some of those things that might happen. Is it possible that in here, that we can have a provost, pro- uh, probation, uh,
Provision?
Probationary period, that we can look at this and monitor it, and then come back? If everything's working right, you can come back, and then if it's not, then we need to address it. We need, we need to address it, or we need to deal with the situation right then and there. But if we just randomly just throw it out there, you know, it's, uh, without coming back and taking a look at it again and understanding it, uh, I, I think we really need to know it needs to be a part of this.
I think that's the way our ordinance has worked, though, right? I mean, they're, they're basically a work in progress. We can change.
Have, have absolutely no concern with including something like, like that. Um, I, I mean, it's a test, it's a pilot.
My only concern, it would be that if it's an annual permit, um, that we would refund him the difference if council decided to eliminate it after six months or something.
Whatever. I mean, I think it's, we, we need a way to move this forward.
Absolutely.
And if that's what it takes, I'm prepared to do it.
In the beginning, and I'm talking about in the beginning. Start, it's a startup, is what it is.
Yes.
And it's just.
I, I, I.
It's brand new.
I concur with that. We need to get it out the gate.
Okay.
And I'm assuming the, uh, would that be CPD that does that, or?
Yeah. We, we can bring it back in three months, six months, for an update.
Okay. I think it's appropriate.
Sure.
Are we, are we going to get an amendment to the ordinance on a six-month probation, or just do that administratively?
Either way.
Yeah, but I think it needs to be written, that they know that, you know, this is going to occur. But we can do it administratively.
Counselor Thomas? Um, I don't, I don't, um, I'm not sure what other entities in the city have the
same kind of, um, penalty, if you will, as item number six, that is the, um, five violations in a year. Five seems like a lot to me, uh, for this kind of, uh, is this in line with other, um, other things that, in the city that, this says if you have five violations, then your license is suspended. Is this in line with other kinds of things like this in the city? I don't even know if we have other kinds of things like this.
Well, typically, you, um, can do three, whenever three happen, whether it's been a year or not. But, um, some of these violations are so small that it seemed like maybe the five was a reasonable number. For instance, you know, one person gets out of hand on your tour and steps off with their open container, and that happens a couple of times. Um, you know, is three too many times? Is five too many times? I mean, we can change the number by amendment, but the thought was that some of these things are things that just happen pretty easily, and maybe five gave a little more leeway. Again, that's something we might look at in the report and see that changing, depending on how it goes and how often these violations happen.
Well, and, and as you were saying that, I was thinking if, if I was the person who owned this, uh, pedal pub, one of the first things I would do when I started my tour is to tell the people on this bus, don't you get off this bus with this, you know, uh, I'll lose my license. Uh, but five just sounded to me like a, a high number. I don't know, just think about it. And if we need to, uh, I, I, I think I would feel more comfortable with three. And that puts the onus on the owner, the operator of the tour bus, to make sure that the people on that bus know what the rules and regs are. Maybe it's handing them a pamphlet or something, you know, with the rules and regs on it. But five just sounded like a, a high number to me. Thank you.
I, I would recommend a motion now to reduce that to three, if that's the consensus.
Mo- motion and a second, uh, to the motion, Counselor Davis?
Counselor Thomas makes a good point. Why don't you just do three offenses, or if it's determined, would be, i- i- if something, God forbid, but if something major happened, if it's determined that we need to address it, then we need to do that. We don't need to wait for more.
Well, that, that's a separate issue, whether you come back and repeal this entire ordinance. I would say go on and reduce it to three for the ordinance framework. And then if you decide you're going to repeal the whole business category, that's a separate matter, and you look at it.
But we, the council can do that.
Sure.
Okay, all right, that's it. Let's.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, uh, there was a motion and a second, uh, for the amendment to lower it to three incidents. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I assume our other three counselors agree. All right, uh, Counselor Crab?
Thank you. So do we currently have an ordinance on the books that cover, um, alcohol in limousine services?
Yeah, and I think there may be some state law also, but yes.
Then why are we reinventing the wheel? Why don't we just use that ordinance and add a section to that ordinance to include these, these tour, you know, services? I mean, it seems, I mean, that seemed like.
Well, we had to define what a tour service vehicle is, because it's a little bit different, because it is open, and also to provide where they can operate with alcohol. We wouldn't want it kind of everywhere. As in a limousine, you're enclosed, and they could drive anywhere. So it's a little, it's a little bit different.
And you've gotten a permit from the state. The chauffeur has gotten a license, chauffeur's license. From the state, and we're asking for it to be from the city?
Yeah, this is a, this is a local regulatory fee of a thousand dollars. This is the city money.
Okay, so did we use some of the, um, layout of the limousine ordinance in this ordinance? Well, actually, we used a lot of the layout from the Savannah ordinance, um, the way they regulate their tour vehicles. Okay. Has Savannah had any issues? And how long have they had their ordinance? Gosh, at least twenty, ten years, I think, more.
I, I don't, I don't know how long, um, but I know the police chief did talk to, when we were talking about an entertainment district in general, um, they didn't have issues in Savannah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that's all the questions.
All right, we'll bring that back as amended next week on second reading. The next item, Mayor, is, uh, budget reconciliation ordinance for FY22. Ms. Alexander, I think, is here. If anybody has questions, the revenue for general fund has increased by seventeen point six million, and these other funds listed, there are some increases and a few decreases.
It probably wouldn't hurt for the financial director.
She's coming around and can comment.
Just give some general, for folks watching, know that this is normal, and we deal with it every year.
Yes, sir. Good morning, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager and, uh, City Attorney. Um, as you mentioned, uh, Mr. Mayor, this is an annual process that we do to reconcile the budget for the, uh, preceding fiscal year. Uh, for FY22, um, we were able to, uh, cover all of the overages that were, um, in the, uh, departmental budgets with existing, um, expenses. So we did some, some real- reallocations. Um, the departments that were, um, over, uh, presented to the council at some point during the year, because pursuant to ordinance thirteen dash thirty-nine, they must come before this council and ask for additional appropriations. And so that would include, um, obviously the, um, city attorney's litigation expenses, um, the real estate budget relative to, um, legacy terrorists, but there's, uh, revenue that offsets those, um, overages. The, um, fire EMS department, uh, they came, it was, um, for auto parts and supplies, utilities, and the public safety bonuses. Uh, the prob- the probate court, um, it was various expenses, um, for probate, as well as the sheriff's office. Um, it was relative to the inmate medical expenses, um, the coroner, um, was, uh, various expenses that he incurred due to increases, um, that he advised was re- related to COVID-19. Um, and then the, uh, non-departmental for the allowance of debt. Um, so as I mentioned previously, the, uh, these departments did come before the council requesting additional appropriations. There is a presentation on the city manager's agenda, uh, the fiscal conditions, uh, presentation that I'll give, um, today, and it'll go, uh, in more detail, uh, concerning where we are, um, in terms of the revenues and so forth for the FY22 budget.
All right, any questions? I appear to be able to, thank you.
Yes.
All right, we'll bring that back for a vote next week, Mayor. The, um, business agenda, that's all we had, but we've got a request for an executive session on a personnel matter. Uh, that's all we have listed.
Okay, Counselor House?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'm actually seeing that, uh, Chief Audit in the back made me think about this. Could we get an update next meeting on where we stand with audits that have been requested and are ongoing, just, just so we know where we are?
Yes. Uh, matter of fact, we've talked about the need to have in the clerk's office, uh, a, a list from the auditor, uh, of things, of all, uh, audits that have been completed, as well as all that are underway, and just update them, you know, maybe every sixty days.
Sure, that'd be good, yeah.
So that way, anybody at any time that wants it, we should be able to get that answered.
Okay, we'll close out the year basically next week.
Yep.
Just kind of see where we are.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, uh, next, public agenda. Uh, as you know, public agenda, we allow five minutes for any comments that, uh, need to be directed to council, asking for their, uh, action on anything. And, uh, if you can't confine it to five minutes, we will unfortunately cut you off, but you will have an opportunity to come back for an additional three minutes at the end of the clerk's agenda, if you want to, want to stick around. Uh, first individual we've got is Ms. Veronica Hardman, regarding the unsanitary, sanitary conditions of the neighbor's property in the North Wind Community. Uh, Ms. Hardman, welcome. Come on up to the podium. And if you would, uh, if you'd begin by stating just your name and your address, and that way we'll, we'll start the timer right after that, okay?
Okay. My name is Veronica Hardman, and I live at ten Nightwind Court in Spring Lake Division, here in Columbus.
Okay.
Um, I'm going to make it real quick. Uh, my neighbor's house, eleven Nightwind Court. He's been living there since May of two thousand eight. I moved in in February of two thousand twenty-one. Um, his house burnt down January tenth of two thousand nineteen. Um, the HOA and the members of the community came up here and spoke with you guys on April seventeenth of two thousand nineteen. Uh, he was a hoarder, tried to ask for help to get him the property condemned. Uh, the house was demolished in July of two thousand nineteen. We're going on four years, and he still lives on the vacant property, to the point of there's rats, roaches, um, he urinates, defecates all over the property. Um, it's become a health hazard. It smells horrendous. We've called code enforcement for the last four years, and even prior to that, before I moved in, they were calling code enforcement for overgrown grass, trees, everything, um, to no avail. He has had a dog that would roam the streets. It came into my property. We had to enclose our backyard. Can't let my children go outside and play. They are going to be attacked. As of this Saturday, he, his three current dogs that he has attacked one of the neighbors down the street, and he did nothing. It attacked him and his puppy. They both needed severe medical attention. The puppy is life or death right now. It's touch and go. The member of our community had to have several stitches in his hand. Um, I'm coming for our neighborhood to ask for help, to see if you guys can help us condemn this lot or do something. It's been four years now, this January, and he's just living on the land.
We, we have, I, I remember this, gentlemen. I remember the, um, and unfortunately, we have not been able to find laws that he is violating to take his property, his remaining. He still has a right to live on that, that property unless he gets involved in some other issues like indecent exposure. Certainly he has to control, uh, animals that are on his property, and he can be charged. Uh, so we'll, we'll get with codes and, and inspections and codes and see if there's, and the police chief is here, and we'll see if there's anything that we can charge him with, because we've tried, we tried to get that guy out of there. We understand the challenge he's creating for the, for the neighborhood.
He's, uh, he's urinating and defecating in buckets and dumping him down the sewer drain in front of my home.
That's, that's, yeah, because that's, that's a violation, because that's not a, uh, that's not a sewer intake. That is stormwater runoff. It's on Nightwind Court?
Eleven Nightwind Court.
All right, Counselor House?
Well, when, when you mentioned the, the sewer facilities, that's what made me think that, that would be a violation right there, because I thought you had to have running water and a sewer or whatever to live someplace, don't you? Do you see limits or not?
I don't, I don't believe you do. I, I know that we have examined this.
Yeah.
According to Ryan, we have sent, and the city manager has some information on it, but.
Well, I.
We've checked it out, and, and the problem is, the guy has a right to be there. It's his house, he owns it. His lot, he doesn't have a house.
Yeah, I was like, there's, there's nothing there. If, um, I could email you pictures of what the property looks like.
Mayor, I, I'd like for, uh, Director Ryan Pruitt to come around. I think he has a photo, actually, so.
Okay.
He can be allowed to come around and speak to the matter.
Good morning, uh, Mayor and Council, and I appreciate Ms. Hardman being here today. Her and I spoke actually before Thanksgiving, um, about her concerns, as well as, I actually went and visited the property on, on the fifteenth, and, um, just hadn't had a chance to get back with, with Ms. Hardman, so I'm glad she was here. So this is the view from the street of the property. You can see, it is, you know, unsightly, it is overgrown. Um, I did recently just send some pictures to the Director of Public Works, because a lot of that overgrowth, um, is on the right of way. Um, the owner has planted a lot of that, so I did send that to Public Works. I don't think they've had a chance to go see if they can, you maybe trim the. I don't think they've had a chance to go see if they can, you maybe trim the trees on our property at least. But the, the rest of the trees, there is no weeds, so we run into that a lot. You know, everything that's overgrown is, is trees or shrubs or bushes that, that we don't trim. You can see in the back right, there is some storage cabinets, you know, some items that typically you wouldn't see on a vacant lot, but it does not rise to the level of violating our stockpiling ordinances or anything like that. We, I went out there on the fifteenth and, you know, I did not, and none of our officers have ever seen any evidence of the, using the bathroom in buckets and anything like that, so we just haven't been able to prove those, those issues. So we continue to visit the property when there are any issues. You know, we do give it to the owner to get them, get them resolved.
Have we, have we contacted, see if this guy has any family?
He, he actually does have another residence in the area. And so, you know, we've never seen him overnight because we're not there at night, but we've never seen him, you know, stay in the night or spending lengths of time there. You know, he will be there in his truck, you know, just hanging out on his property. But we've never been able to prove, you know, that he's actually living there full-time.
Can we, well, I wonder if we could do a wellness check from the police department occasionally and go out there late at night and see if the guy is staying out there? Because it, it just seems to me like there's got to be some, listen, I probably shouldn't say, there's got to be some type of emotional imbalance or, or some type of mental illness. Because this has been going on. I, I remember when this started, when this house, he was living in that house after it was almost burned to the ground, and we had to end up taking it down, and he just moved right back out there and kept squatting on that property, not squatting, staying on that property. But I, you know, I think with the, with the issues, if he is dumping stuff in the stormwater intakes, and if he is, if he does have animals out there that are untethered, and he's caused some problems, then we need, we need to build a case against the guy. Mr. City Attorney, what would be the appropriate steps to try to begin to build a case against this gentleman? If he's, if he, in fact, if we can prove that he's got animals out there that is, that are unsecured, that he is putting human waste into the stormwater drains?
Well, we'll go to chapter five and the thirteen, I think, in the code on the sanitation issues, and start issuing a citation. That's the first step.
All right, we've got Counselor Woodson.
Just have a question. Is that a for-sale sign? Is that for that property?
It is there. I know in conversations with Ms. Hardman, he's been, people have offered to buy it from him, and he's refused those offers.
Oh, okay, so he just has it there to, like, make you think he's doing something, but he actually is not? Because the first thing that came to my mind was when I saw that for-sale sign, everybody got together and buy it and be done with it.
Prior to me, my husband, my, our kids moving in, he was offered almost a hundred thousand dollars for the property, and he denied anything. He listed it in October twenty nineteen for sale for forty-five thousand, had plenty of offers, and took it off by February twenty twenty. At this point, he just wants to make a mockery of the community and the HOA. He's had amendments taken from him. He can't use any of the facilities on the HOA property because he was going to the pool and showering in the pool after his house burned down, and prior to that.
So he's just wanna be a nuisance, that's it. Mr. Pruitt, is there a possibility that, I know it's asking employees for a lot, but is it possible to now and then do a check? Or if they can contact you and say, you know, kind of have a direct number contact to say that he's doing these, these personal items that he, they said, someone can go quickly, get a picture, check it, do a violation? Because the same is gonna have to be almost like, you know, like what we do with drug dealers, you know, try to, to build a case, buy salarions and things like that. I know that's asking a lot, but this has been going on for years, so maybe we need to be a little bit more creative so that we can build a case against him. And city manager, I mean, city attorney, I know this is a cuss word. I know what I'm gonna say is a cuss word, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Kansas City, oh my, what is it? Domain this property?
Eminent domain.
Eminent domain? No? Okay, I was just wondering because it's being such a nuisance.
That would have to be for a public purpose. It'd have to be in conjunction with some other redevelopment plan of the city.
Okay, I'm just asking, thinking of different ways.
Well, with, with, if he has animals, if they can prove that he's the owner of the dogs that are attacking people, and he's doing this other stuff, it seems like that would be a public nuisance if nothing else.
And then will we be able to?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I had to step out to the, take a restroom break a minute, but I, I think I know this case well and worked on it for quite a while. And I'm just gonna highlight it. I'm not gonna candy coat it because it's an issue, it's a problem, it's a nuisance, and it's real. But I know the city is very limited in, in what they can do. I've met on several occasions with the association out there, and even police chief showed up, former codes inspection director showed up. We try to do everything we can to get this thing rectified and cleaned up. It's a problem. It's a real problem, but under the law, it falls under a private property matter. We talked about this. The police chief's here. He's probably not aware of it. Maybe he is. I don't know. I know with the former police chief that you have to catch this person in the act of these things that we're talking about. If he's defecating in his yard and he's causing issues and doing that kind of stuff, you've got to catch him, and you've got to be able to prove it. You just can't say it. You've got to be able to prove it. There is due process, and it is his property, and you don't have to have a house on it. He can live in a tent on it. It's his property. He can do what he wants. He can take a bath in a, in a pool if he wants to. But the law, the law, federal laws and all allow him to do that. We have been out there. I know that our public safety has been out there many times, and, and they've done health evaluations, mental health evaluations. I've heard the stories. I could tell you all the stories. It's, it's really crazy, you know, it's wild, but it, it's real, like I said. And it's unfortunate that the people in that area have to deal with it day after day after day. And this guy is no dummy. I mean, he's smart. He knows when to do it. He knows when nobody's looking. And he does some really strange and crazy stuff. But you've got to catch him in some of these acts that would, it's a violation. By then, he would be fined. He would go through the court, and I still don't think that they can just remove him off the property. I think the only way would be to determine that he has a mental, severe mental health problem. And then, you know, they will deal with it under the state regulations and, and laws. But I did everything I could do as a council representative, even with the CPD and our codes inspection, and tried to get this thing cleaned up and get it solved. And there's just, there was nothing we can do. Our hands are tied, basically, because of, it's a private property matter. It's his property. The only, we've been trying, and I think there's been efforts to try to get him to sell the property and just move and just go somewhere else. But it's to no avail. I mean, he really, he's the one that says yes or no. I'm not sure if there's anything else that I've missed, but I tried, I think, I've tried along with others in, in our city, the right people to try to get this thing resolved. And, you know, I'm, I'm pulling all this stuff up from memory because I didn't know that's what y'all were coming to talk about today. But now it's like, you know, hey, this is vivid. It's, it's a problem, and I, I feel for you guys. I really do.
Is there any way we could get the Health Department to go out there and survey it? Just, this smells horrendous. You can smell it from up the block. Like, we're at the end of the cul-de-sac.
You can if they can come out there. That's a state, that's a state agency. I think that we can make a call possibly and get them to go out there and take a look at it. I know CPD, CPD could probably go back out and do another mental health evaluation and, and check on some of those things. If he is, you know, like I said, you cannot defecate and do that kind of stuff in the yard, and there's certain things you can't do there. They know what they are. But they'll charge him, and then it'll go to court. And I think that soon as it's, goes through that process, he'd go right back to his property and live out on his property. I don't think there's any, you know, that's, that's why I say it's a private property matter.
We're, we're just concerned with the, the health hazard that he's creating and the possible another fire hazard that he, you know, he does live there at night. I see the fire. We take pictures of it. We have to keep our windows closed because I have a young daughter who has seen him roaming his property naked or in his underwear. And so we, we don't allow children outside or our windows open at all.
Well, I, I think in the last, the meetings that we have with the association was that we, we've got to get videos. We've got to get pictures. We've got to get the evidence to, to accumulate in order for law enforcement and the courts to be able to do something. But if they can't, if you can't do that, there's really, it's, it's a private property matter. You know, I'm sitting here, I feel bad because I'm like, you know, I know my hands are tied, and I, I know we tried everything we could do. And, and I really like helping people. I mean, that's one of the reasons I sit here is because I like to help people. And it, I feel, and it makes me hurt too because I know the situation very, very close. And I feel like there's nothing I can do, and it, that bothers me, and I know it bothers you guys.
Okay.
We're just hoping maybe to get the Health Department involved at this point, just to see if maybe they can condemn the lot because between the rats, the roaches, the animals, the smells.
Short answer is yes, you can call them. They, they won't condemn it. But what they can do is, is they can cite him, and he'll have to correct it, and then if he fails to correct it, then they can exercise.
And one other thing to that point about the lot, the, our codes, as long as he's keeping the grass and weeds down, our codes don't address shrubs and trees and things like that. And if he, he can let them just go, it becomes a, a vacant lot to where, I think there's some efforts now that's working. Ms. City Manager, I think there's some people that are starting to work on these, changing some of our ordinances for vacant lots and about the appearance and cleaning them up. I, I don't know if that'll apply here, but you, codes enforcement's limited on what, the determination between grass and weeds and shrubs and trees and bushes. You know, there's a big difference, and that's, we tried that route, and we couldn't do anything because it's determined that it was a lot of shrubs and trees, and he just, just lets it go. Unfortunately, you know, there's other lots in, in the, in the neighborhood, in the subdivision that also have natural spaces as well, and it's, it's kind of no different. But, you know, I wouldn't be one to agree with that, but, but that's the way it's, it's written. It, it's, it's hard to really understand. If you live there and you live next door, it, it's real. Like I said, it's real, and it's, it's a pain. I wish there was an easy answer, an easy way to fix this thing. But yes, you could call the Health Department and come out there and look at it. I'm sure CPD chief, the chief is right there. He could send some officers back out there to, to maybe redo a mental, I, I believe CPD does the mental health evaluations and then can refer it to the appropriate agencies if it's determined. And they may be able to do that again. I, I know Director Pruitt's doing all he can do. I don't know what else to say, Mayor.
Okay. Counselor House?
There we go. It's actually a question of Ms. Hardman. Did anybody call in that last animal attack that you mentioned where the dogs?
They did on Saturday, and Animal Control refused to come out on Saturday. They actually came out yesterday and picked up one of the three dogs instead of all three of them because they all attacked the puppy.
Okay.
But they refused to come out on Saturday and apprehended the dogs.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So they, you talked to them and they refused to come out?
The people that were attacked, they refused to come out, and everyone called. I've called Animal Control about four or five times in the last two months.
So, so you didn't call them on Saturday. You would have called nine-one-one? You called nine-one-one? And they told you?
The police said to call Animal Control, and which we all did as a community. Police didn't come out and take a statement until yesterday.
Well, and I, and I say that because typically on weekends, you call nine-one-one.
And no one came out until yesterday. The police didn't come out and get a statement, nothing.
And so they told you to call nine, excuse me, Animal Control? So you could not have called Animal Control until Monday?
We got through to Animal Control.
On Saturday?
On Saturday. They pushed us through, but Animal Control said they could not come out on Saturdays. They'd have to wait till Monday.
Who told you that?
Whoever picked up the line at Animal Control. I wouldn't have to know. I'd have to ask my neighbor whose dog was attacked.
Okay.
We can check it. It'll be recorded. We'll find out. I, I do know that they are, we, we do not have more than one Animal Control unit, I think, on call. I believe that's right over the weekend. And, and I, I think when it is an emergency, though, they will respond to it. And, and occasion where you've got a, a dog that is causing problems or any animal that is violating behavior, causing problems among the residents, so we'll, we'll check on that. All right, Counselor Woodson?
City Manager, that's a little alarming what she said. Can you pull the nine-one-one call? To see when they called and see what actually occurred?
We will investigate.
Okay. Just want to make sure, because I know that they don't work on the weekends, but you have to call.
Well, they work.
They do work. They prioritize the call.
That's right.
But I know you have to, on the weekends, you gotta go through nine-one-one.
Yeah.
Because I've had a case where I went through nine-one-one. So that's why I'm just wondering.
Well, we, we, we are going to investigate it.
I can give you the name of the person that called nine-one-one.
Sure.
It was Crystal Louise.
That's who called nine-one-one?
She called as well. As well as members of the HOA, like, board.
Okay. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I did want to ask the Director, Director Pruitt. Do we know, do we know, is he still piling up grass clippings and all kinds of stuff out on the front like he was before and tree, uh, cuttings and things like that? Can you check on that? Because that's something that we, we told him not to do that. He can't do that. But he'd take grass, he'd take all kinds of stuff and just pile it up out along, on our, on the city roadway. Can you specifically have somebody check on that?
Yeah, we will, and I'll get with Public Works too, and we'll check out the right-of-way, and at least we can get that part right.
Okay. Ms. Hardman, we're, we're aware of the issue, and I, frankly, I was, I didn't know it was still continuing at this level. And I, I know the neighbors are having a rough time. But we'll try to utilize public safety, Public Works, Public Animal Control, and, and try to do what we can within the law to try to hold him accountable for any violations that he's, he's, he's involved in. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've, we've already taken care of number one on the agenda of restoring locks and dams of the Appalachian Chattahoochee Flint River Systems. Number two on my agenda, agenda is approval is requested to execute a lighting cert, you heard from Georgia Power.
Motion second to, we've got one, two, three. We're waiting on Counselor Woodson. We've got to have a physical call.
Okay. Well, and let me just talk about this. You heard from Georgia Power last week that they made a presentation. They showed you a video of the difference in lighting. And they've proposed a replacement of three hundred and three or so lights, a hundred and fifty watt decorative post tops. And we're talking about the uptown area. And then we shared with you that in all of our new T-SLOSS projects, what we're doing roll work, we would update to the more current lighting. And then we're talking about setting a new standard going forward when new subdivisions are developed to include.
to include, uh, acceptance of new streets and, uh, on planned roadway projects, we would ask for the newly new standard of lighting that we've set. And so we're asking that you allow us to execute a lighting services agreement with Georgia Power for uptown decorative lighting upgrade. And that's the request today.
Okay. Well, there is a motion second and, uh, so all, but we need to queue it, if you don't mind. Counselors, please enter your votes. Madam Clerk, if you would, all three of the others voted yes.
Okay, uh, and so next, Mr. Mayor, we want to purchase property at eleven sixteen Brown Avenue.
Motion second, purchase property, eleven sixteen Brown Avenue, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, please queue it.
While they're voting, uh, this would be, um, eighteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars to expand or upgrade the fire station number six. Um, and, um, and we would use SLOSS funds for that. Uh, the next item, uh, number four, we had a lot of discussion with you about, uh, the Liberty Theater last meeting. And our staff are already, have already moved in full with applying for various grants. And this one is a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant with a fifty thousand dollar local match.
Motion and a second, uh, to approve, uh, the grant if, if, if it is, uh, successful. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, please queue it. And counselors, any of your votes, please.
And, and next, we want to apply for that, with the same eight, uh, National Park Services Save America for.
All right, motion second to approve the grant if, if approved on the Mar Rainey House.
Mar Rainey for, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Any, any further discussion? All right, please queue it. Counselors, you can vote. All right, and the other three obviously said yes.
This is a.
All three of us did it.
We can go ahead and approve, we can approve those, uh, uh, but, uh, we will walk through them anyway. So, uh, so we'll go ahead and, and, uh, vote on approving item six through nine, motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we queue, can we, can't queue it for all six, all four of those, can we, or can we? No, we'll, so we'll do that with a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, they're approved, go ahead and say what they approve.
So number six, uh, is to submit, uh, for the Liberty Theater again, an application and accept if approved to the National Trust for Historic Places African American Culture Heritage Action Fund grant. And this is a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that we are applying for. And then we are applying for that same grant for, um, the Mar Rainey House, uh, we are applying for. And then number eight is a Homeland Security Georgia Search and Rescue Grant that, uh, we are applying for, it's thirty-nine thousand dollars for new rescue equipment for Homeland Security, for a Georgia search and rescue. Uh, then, uh, number nine is a grant, twenty thousand, uh, dollars, um, and for hazmat equipment. And then, um, I did an add-on, and I don't know if you included that, but lease of equipment for a city golf course is, uh, and it, uh, is an add-on and, um, it's asking approval to, uh, to lease a hundred and four golf carts and one beverage cart for use at Bull Creek, and these would be replacements.
Okay. Uh, motion and second to approve, uh, on ten, any, any discussion? Hearing none, please queue, and counselors, you can vote. That's an add-on, that's an add-on, I'm sorry, that's a voice vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's approved.
So then, uh, I've got purchases, uh, drill, field, maintenance and inspection for fire EMS.
Mr. City Manager, I apologize, Counselor Crabbe's been waiting. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I just wanted to put in the record that the reason why several of us moved to approve these as a group was that there's no local match.
Well, well, there is, would be match, it would come from sales tax on some of them.
No, the ones that we approved, the six through nine.
Okay.
On here, it's, it's showing no matching funds. That's, that's why I moved, and I'm assuming that that's why the others too, moved to approve those as a group. And I just wanted to put that on record.
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, drill field maintenance for a fire EMS, um, we're asking your approval of seventeen thousand, uh, five hundred and four, fifty-four dollars is estimated value.
Move approval of A through F.
Second.
All right, there's a motion to approve and a second, uh, the purchases, items A through F, any that anyone wants pulled? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Purchases are approved, Mr. Do you have to go through those?
Mr. Mayor, would be firefighter cancer insurance policy renewal, uh, sixty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, C, uh, would be fourteen zero turn mowers for portion rec. Uh, and, um, the, um, total price is a hundred and twenty-six thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-four cent, uh, replacement equipment. And then D would be, uh, thirty foot low for trolley, uh, heavy duty, uh, buses. And over a three-year period, they've, uh, gotten a, um, a set agreement on what it would cost uh, over the next three years if they purchased in year one, two, year three, they wouldn't have to go back through this entire process again. And, um, so that's, um, item A through D. And then E, uh, John Deesprayer, uh, for Oxbow Golf Course, eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. And then F, um, and the police chief is here, confiscated firearms for credit or swap for police department. And so, um, this would be a swap that has a total value of eighty thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars and, uh, seventy-eight cents. Those are the purchases, uh, Mr. Mayor. And, um, with that, uh, I have, uh, a few more updates that we want to.
We, we have a counselor that has to leave, I think around noon, we would probably get to him anyway, but we might want to go ahead and go to any items that need action and then come back to them.
Sure.
So with, with that in mind though, we'll, we'll go to the clerk of council's agenda. Madam Clerk, you want to hit your button?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good morning to the mayor and council. Uh, for the clerk's agenda, item one is a resolution changing the meeting dates in January twenty twenty-three and canceling the February seventh, twenty twenty-three proclamation session.
Motion second to approve the, uh, meeting dates, all in favor, say aye. Anybody, anyone opposed? Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, I did want to just quickly go over those dates. Uh, we, on, for January third, twenty twenty-three, um, this would be a, uh, regular meeting at nine o'clock AM. We would cancel the January tenth regular council meeting, and there's no meeting scheduled for January seventeenth. Uh, the regular council meeting for January twenty-fourth will continue to be held at five thirty PM. And January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, uh, we will have a consent agenda work session at nine o'clock AM. And once again, we will be canceling the February seventh, twenty twenty-three proclamation session.
Okay, thirty-first will also be the bus steward at the city manager's office scheduled.
And that is correct, Mr. Mayor. Item number two is an email correspondence from Mr. Judge Richardson resigning from his seat on the Uptown Facade Board, should be received.
Motion second, receive the resignation, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item three is minutes of one board that we have listed, Board of Tax Assessors, may be received.
Motion second, receive the Board of Tax Assessors minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved.
Next, we have an add-on resolution excusing Council Barnes from today's meeting.
There's a motion, is there a second? There's a motion and a second to approve the, uh, excuse, uh, the Council Jerry Pops Barnes, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next, we have board appointments, we have the mayor's appointments, any nominations would, uh, may be confirmed for this meeting. The Public Safety Advisory Commission, the seat of Pete Tesmigen, uh, this is the mayor's appointment.
I'll bring you one next week.
Then we have council district seat appointments, any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. For the Public Safety Advisory Commission, the seat of Stan Sweeney, uh, he has passed away, this is District Six, uh, Mayor Pro Tem's nominee. For the Recreation Advisory Board, we have Carl Brown, this is District Nine. Uh, James J. Wilkoff, this is District Two, and we have two vacant seats, uh, District Three and District One. And next, we have council appointments, any nominations would be listed for the next meeting. The Animal Control Advisory Board, the seat of Patricia Montgomery, she has resigned, this seat is open for nominations. Did you say you would bring it? Oh, okay. Okay. Did you want me to come back? Okay. Uh, for the Building Authority of Columbus, the seat of Vincent Allen, uh, this seat is open for nominations. And Counselor Huff is nominating Gerald Miley for this seat. And we'll bring that back for nominate, for confirmation at the next meeting. For the Columbus Aquatics Commission, the seat of Barbara Cummings, uh, Counsel Crabbe is nominating Mr. Don Hoffman uh, to succeed Ms. Cummings, and we'll bring this back at the next meeting for confirmation. We also have the seat of David Helmick, who's not eligible to serve another term. And Bruce Samuels is also not eligible to serve another term. Uh, these seats are open for nominations. We also have a vacant seat that is open for nominations. For the Historic and Architectural Review Board, the seat of Fred Green, who has resigned, this is the historic district resident seat. For the Land Bank Authority, we have the seat of Tyler Pritchard, uh, this seat is open for nominations. For the Person Review Board, we have Dr. Shanita Peddaway, this is an alternate member, uh, alternate member five, and this seat is open for nominations. For the Tree Board, we have the seat of Ms. Chris Henson, this is the environmental advocacy representative seat. We have Troy Keller, this is the educator seat, we have Frank Tommy, this is the residential development seat. All are open for nominations, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Counselor Woodson?
Madam Clerk, can you check if they have any, um, suggestion on who would be interested in the Historic Architectural Review Board? Can you reach out to them?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Woodson.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. The name for, um, Animal Control Advisory Board is Alexander Caldwell, and I just, um, sent Lindsay his contact information.
Thank you, we have that listed for the next meeting for confirmation.
Okay.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. City Manager, we'll go back to your presentations now.
Okay, I've got a few more, um, updates and, and the first one actually is going to be from, uh, Madam Clerk, Sandra Davis, Region Three Conference Update.
Thank you and good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city administrators. Um, I come to you this morning to bring some good news, uh, with regards to the IIMC Region Three Conference for twenty twenty-four. Okay, um, I just wanted to announce for the first time ever, the seat of Columbus has been chosen to host the IIMC Region Three Conference twenty twenty-four. Um, IIMC is the acronym for International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Uh, the Region Three consists of the state of Georgia, Alabama, Florida, North Carolina, and South Carolina. The mission of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks is to promote continuing education and certification through university and college-based institutes and provides networking solutions, services, and benefits to the members worldwide. This organization was founded back in nineteen forty-seven, so it's been around about seventy-five years. And I wanted to just talk a little bit about the history of the municipal clerk. Uh, the municipal clerk is the oldest of public servants in local government, along with the tax collector. Their profession traces back before biblical times. Uh, the early keepers of the archives were called remembrances because, uh, the records were considered to be a part of the memory of the person that was responsible for these public records.
Excuse me, Sandra, hey y'all, this, I'm sorry, but it's, it's, it's kind of tough to hear.
And that is just one of the reasons why, um, I take what I do very seriously and very, um, I'm very in tune with what I do because I understand the responsibilities and the importance of it. Because today, uh, we are making history for the generations to come. And so, uh, want to make sure that the records are accurate. And so that is a big part of, uh, the reason that I take what I do very seriously. I want to have, uh, I want to talk, uh, provide special thanks to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I want to call Peter Bowden up and his staff member to come and join me because I just want to put a spotlight on the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the city's marketing team. Because without them, this conference would not be possible. Uh, what I did was turn the RFP process over to, uh, Peter Bowden and his team and Ashley put together a tremendous package that was sent to the Clerks Association. And, um, once they did that, uh, we were, uh, selected of one of two for possibly having this conference. And so when, uh, we had the site, uh, visit from the committee, Peter Bowden's team, Ashley, she just came forward and she just highlighted all the jewels in Columbus. She had, she was very knowledgeable about all the history that's going on, uh, that has occurred in Columbus. She was knowledgeable about the new construction, uh, that is going on. So she was able to point out all of those, uh, little gems, uh, in the uptown area. And so, uh, it is, for that reason, I just wanted to, uh, just put a little spotlight on the city's marketing team because without them, this conference would not have been possible. So I did want to, uh, just step aside for just a moment and see if Peter wanted to say anything. But we are expecting over two hundred participants of my clerk colleagues to embark on the city of Columbus. And so that's bringing revenue into the city, and we are looking forward to this in twenty twenty-four. Uh, but I did want to step aside for just a moment and let Peter, uh, make a few comments.
Thank you so much. Uh, it, it is a pleasure to be a part of this announcement because it really is a team effort. As, as Ms. Davis was talking about, it was one of those things where we quickly embraced it, we've been working on this, uh, multiple years trying to bring this sort of conference to, uh, Columbus. And Ashley unfortunately is not here this morning, Lexi Harden, uh, part of our sales team is here. Ashley's actually in Savannah, continuing to prospect for new business, uh, for Columbus. And then from, from there, she and, uh, Ms. Harden will leave, uh, for the Atlanta area midweek for two other, um, meetings in the process of, of prospecting Columbus for new business. So again, I want to. So again, one of compliments that Ms. Davis on, trusting us with this opportunity to bring new business to Columbus. And of course, the fact that this is the first time we've been able to earn this, this type of conference to the city is extraordinary. I think it also speaks to the fact that for the last almost four years, we have really knuckled down on promoting Columbus as a meeting destination with the new infrastructure, the expansions, and the improvements in our meeting destination. And this sort of investment from the private sector, as well as the public sector, is beginning to pay off in big ways. So again, thank you for that, this opportunity, and thank you for the recognition.
Thank you, Peter. And from there, I did also want to thank Haley Tillery with the Convention and Trade Center Authority, as well as the Marriott for their hospitality. And I want to thank this mayor and council for your continued support, as well as the city administration. We continue to receive support, and we are so thankful for that opportunity to have a leadership that is supportive of our strive to make things better in Columbus. So. And as always, I like to end with a quote. The path to moving forward is to recognize where we have come from. And that was something that I had put together. And that is the end of my presentation.
Very good job on bringing the conference here, yeah.
Thank you.
And I know that Visit Columbus has been actively engaged in a lot of different organizations. I know Council Crabb is a member of the Board of Realtors, and their state association is coming here, I think, first of the year. And we'll have, the state president will be from here. So having the clerks here is going to be an opportunity to expose Columbus to them and maybe get someone back just to come visit.
And we have been told that out of the five states that are part of Region Three, that Georgia puts on the best conference. So I have been tasked, I have been given a big task.
You better get to work.
Yes, yes. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
It's 2024. We are in the planning stage right now. It is going to be in February. So we are still in the planning stage and have not determined the exact dates at this point.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you to the CVB, Peter Bowden and Ashley. They, they do great work, and we certainly appreciate them every time I have a chance with the Georgia City County Managers or with GMA and, and others. You know, I, I call Peter, turn the RFP over to him, and he, he gets the work done on the RFP to compete for the conferences. And so, Peter, know that we appreciate you. Next, I've got the Linwood Park and Ride Project Director Rosa Evans from Metro Transit and Metro Transit Compliance Officer Robert Sheridan. And you've heard me say time and time again, you know, we're still spending money from the 2012 T-SLOSS, you know? They had about eight, nine million dollars they had to, to spend. And as we go into 2023, we start collecting another 25 million for Metro in T-SLOSS dollars. They got $4 million in addition to that through Warnock's office. They just keep looking for this grant money, and they keep finding it. And so, we got Metro here, and they want to talk about the Linwood Park and Ride Project Director Rosa Evans.
Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, Mr. City Manager. We're excited to be before you today, just to give you a brief update and update the public on this project that we have been working on. Went to Deputy City Manager about a year ago after the enrichment services vacated the property right adjacent to Metro. And asked, can we purchase that property with TIA funding? So we got the ball rolling, reached out, talked with TIA, and got their approval for it, got with the engineering team here with the city, who have been very instrumental in helping us with this project. Donna Newman and her team, Philip Adams and Ryan Pruitt, jumped on board to help us get this moving. So before, I, I don't want to tell you everything because Staff, Robert Sheridan, our compliance officer, who just, you know, took this project under his wings and worked very closely with the engineering department and as well as GDOT. He's going to do the presentation today. So I just want to, we're excited about it. It is another great amenity for our community, and you'll see what Robert has for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Evans, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Council, and Mr. City Manager. It's my pleasure to present to you all the Linwood Park and Ride Project that we've been working on, as Director Evans has said, for about a year now, to address a, kind of a dilapidated vacant property that was next to us, incorporate that into our existing campus infrastructure. So without further ado, let's just get to some background information about the property. So it's located at 1646 Ninth Avenue, and it's outlined in red. And it really is just a convenient location for a park and ride. It is quite literally right next to our existing campus, and it's also right across the street from the Dragonfly Trail. And you can actually see a before and after. So before, the property was in pretty bad shape. We got with engineering. They basically told us if you use the existing infrastructure, you'd spend a fortune and still have issues. So we really just got, got together and thought, what, what could we do with this property that would benefit the community, stimulate growth, and just draw attention to Metro and increase our ridership? So having said that, we got with engineering. Metro actually paid to have the building demolished and the property cleared in April 2022. And since then, we've been in the planning phases and getting everything ready. So this is a before and after. The before is from Google Maps, the 3D view that they have. Unfortunately, it was, the imagery is a bit old. It was prior to the installation of the Dragonfly. But it really just highlights the condition that the property was in prior. And after, is a concept image I developed with what we're looking to do with that property. Just rather than make this just a regular park and ride, we really want to emphasize the park part to make it as park-like as possible. So the amenities that we have planned, we will have two electric vehicle charging stations. And this kind of correlates with the city's sustainability initiative. You and I, we all see it, the electric vehicles are getting a lot more common. So this is just the city's way of getting that infrastructure in there to accommodate for our citizens. Number two, we're going to have some pretty cool bike amenities. We're going to have a bicycle shelter and also a bicycle repair station. Number three, just highlighting the convenient location, it's located right next to a sheltered bus stop for Metro. And it's quite literally located across the street from the Dragonfly Trail. Four is just highlighting one of the concepts, which is beautification of the area, beautification of a formerly blighted property. We plan on having flowery bushes, decorative fencing, decorative lighting, just to really make the area shine. And five, again, just highlighting again that decorative aspect of beautification. So the anticipated benefits of this project, one is to attract new and different riders to Metro. Due to COVID, some of the worst months of COVID, we saw a 50% decrease in ridership. As of this fiscal year, ridership is really starting to pick back up. And we're just trying to basically move, help move that along with this project to keep that momentum going. The second benefit is to contribute to the city's sustainability initiative by providing some green EV infrastructure. The third is making some more conveniently located biking amenities for our bike riders in our community. And finally, like as the city manager stated, it's, we're using the remainder of our 2012 T-SLOSS, which is around 9 million. That is it.
And is there, have you projected the cost of this TIA project?
We have budgeted 1.5 million for this.
Okay, and that's with the charging station?
Yes, sir.
Everything?
And the, and getting the infrastructure ready.
Yeah.
Okay, Council, Council House?
Thank you, Mayor. Could you put the map back up? I'm just confused where it is. What streets are what? It's, yeah.
Okay.
Tell me what streets are what? Yeah, okay, but where's Linwood on that map?
Linwood is right below the number three. That is Linwood. Ninth Avenue is right next to the property that's going south, north to south. That's Ninth Avenue.
Yeah.
You know, if you're going up Linwood Boulevard towards Metro?
North Metro is.
Just before, on the right. And just before you get to Tenth Avenue.
Okay.
The old enrichment services building that was on the right-hand side, that old school building.
That's where it is, okay.
Yes. A body shop, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Very good. Hopefully, well, you know, and that's the thing, in larger, in other large cities, you see citizens taking advantage of their public transportation.
Yeah.
Not have to put some money into it.
And of course, with the TIA money, there is no match.
Correct, yes, sir.
It's money that we have for things like this. Mayor, I don't know if there are any other questions?
Doesn't appear to be any.
Well, I want to thank Robert Sheridan for his work. And, and I'll, I'll tell you, I was teaching a master's public administration class at Columbus State University. And Robert was one of my students in that master's program. And he's one of those students that every, after, he waits around, he hangs around after every class, and everybody's gone, and he wants to come talk to the instructor. And he has all these, he's very inquisitive with all these questions. And so, Mayor, you may recall that I brought Robert Sheridan down to be an intern in my office. And so, I gave him various special projects, and he went around to all of the various departments. But one of the projects I gave him was to identify all of the gateways into our city and to identify the best possible gateway signage we could have. And so, he looked at, I mean, he, he did the entire thing, and we've handed it off to Pam Hodge. But you know, you're coming in from all, from Tifton, and you see all Bennett, Georgia, when you've already got the big sign, all Bennett, Georgia, and whatever. But he was looking at every gateway, Robert did. And whether you're going over Thorpe, coming in from Phoenix City, or coming in on the north bridge from Phoenix, but all of the gateways, coming on Second Avenue, and he's identified those and presented us with samples of what gateway signs might look like for Columbus. But that is just part of his great work. And so, and he was helping Metro with some stuff, and they liked him so well that they hired him in. And, and so, Director Evans brags on him all the time about, if you want something done, give it to Robert Sheridan. I mean, you'll get it.
You gave him an A.
He did, he had an A. Yes, he did. He did. But I, I do appreciate your work.
Thank you, sir.
Council Davis and others have been talking about gateway signs, but I wanted to highlight that in Robert's work, Council Davis, because I think you've been talking about gateway signs. Well, he's done the work. And so, but thank you for your work, Robert.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, council, for having me here. I look forward to doing some more great things for our community.
Thanks, Robert.
Thank you.
Next, Mayor and Council, I have got the comprehensive camera update from Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin.
Okay, good morning, good morning. There we go. Just a brief update on where we are with the comprehensive camera program. You know, we came to you a few months ago, just to kind of give you an update of where we are, and wanted to just share with you just kind of the position we're in right now. We are progressing. These are, of course, the locations that the cameras will be in. We're just going to have them citywide right now. Of course, Phase One is dealing with all of our parks and recreation amenities and facilities. You know that the mobile cameras that we're going to be installing are going to be placed in two different locations or two different areas, reasons that we're going to be placing, and that is, of course, high crime areas and the high illegal dumping areas. And the police chief will deal with where the locations of those high crime area cameras will go. No one will really know where they are. That will be between he and his staff on where they place them. And then, of course, Public Works will handle the locations for the illegal dumping area cameras. We did go ahead and install some of the tag reader cameras, which are mobile, the mobile cameras, at the Civic Center. We did have an outcry from residents in the uptown area regarding some of the issues that were taking place in and around the Civic Center. And so, we did meet with the neighborhood group, and we went ahead and fast-forwarded some of installation for tag readers at all of the entranceways at the Civic Center, which are seven different areas. And so, we did advance that project. It is going very well, where we are able to see very clearly at night and in any circumstance, those vehicles coming and going throughout the Civic Center. And so, if there is an event that takes place, anything that happens, the police department will be able to capture those images. Again, we have, we're in the midst of Phase One. Phase Two and Phase Three will come, and we'll bring that back to you after we've completed Phase One. Phase Two and Three is about $6.7 million. And so, we'll talk a little bit more about what that encompasses once we come back and complete Phase One. As of July 24th, July the 12th, when I came to you previously, we were at 44% complete. As of today, we're at about 65% complete. Eleven sites are 100% complete, and we still have nine sites that have not yet started, but they're continuing because they've got to come in and put in all of the hardware and the infrastructure in order to place these cameras at these locations. So that's, in a nutshell, just the update on the camera program.
Council Woodson.
And again, we'll come back, yes.
Deputy Goodwin, I have a question on you. On the one on the Civic Center. I'm very excited because we have all these people doing illegal things there in the parking lot. How is that, how is that going to be communicated with public safety or whatever entity needs to, so that we can pursue charges on those individuals that are violating, you know, doing these activities at the Civic Center? How's that going to work?
As with all of the cameras that we're installing in these new cameras, public safety has access to everything. And so, they can pull up at any, they, prior to these new cameras being installed, they would have to contact the Civic Center or one of the other departments and say, hey, can you pull footage on this day at this time? They don't have to do that anymore. Now, they have direct access to every camera that we are putting in. And so, they're able to go in if we, they get word that there's an issue, or if they just want to go and look at it. It's no different than, you know, I have access to all the cameras. It's no different than, you know, I have access to all the cameras on my phone, and I can look at those cameras that we're installing. And so they have the same access even more. And so they get it.
Is there going to be a possibility where either the Civic Center or Public Safety would have people at random to look at these, you know, cameras, pictures? I'm saying it's like sometimes on the weekend, you might get a group of people gathering.
Right.
Or by the skate park was the biggest problem. And they're throwing trash on the ground, they're doing wheelies and things like that. Some people will report it, some people won't.
Right.
Is there going to be a time period where we would be monitoring to see what type of activities have been going, or we're just going to depend on the phone call?
No, I think right now, of course, Rob and his team, they do have people that are periodically checking cameras. But again, just every area that we're placing these cameras, you're going to have people that are going to be periodically checking. They're just not sitting there looking at the cameras. But they do have access, and they're going to see what's going on in their sites. And they know that they have events or even times when they know that activity can take place, if it's late at night or after hours, they're checking the cameras. And so they will then also be the eyes and ears for the police department.
Thank you.
Tag readers and all, yes, absolutely.
That was all I had, thank you.
Okay. Councilor House, did you have anything?
That's right. That's right. Okay, the next presentation is.
And before you move on, Mayor, and I hope it's appropriate to mention this, but you sent me an email a few minutes ago. And it has to do with great work of a police officer, Mayor, that they sent me where, and this police officer took time to email the Parks and Rec Director. Yes, when he got off duty. But the police officer emailed the Parks and Rec Director. And the officer is Officer McCarty with Patrol Services. But I just love this kind of police work. He says, he sends it to Holly Browder. Good morning, ma'am. Wanted to make you aware of an incident which occurred at the Comer Gem and Recreation Center. Says, I was checking the parking lot this morning around 2:30 a.m., mind you, and heard a reciprocating saw cutting metal. An individual was apprehended after he entered the lot through a hole cut in the fence. He damaged two of the city vans in the secured lot by cutting off the catalytic converters. He was identified, and I won't call his name, and charged with interference with government property. And then he goes on to tell them the two vehicles and says the catalytic converter for both vehicles are logged into property and evidence at the Public Safety Building. You know, that is great police work.
That's right.
And I just, you sent that to me a few minutes ago, and I just wanted to share that. So we're going to get cameras, but we got police officers out there doing great work, too.
That's right.
We do, and I appreciate you mentioning that. I appreciate Holly, you know, the way she responded as well. Our officers are doing that every single night. You know, 2:30 in the morning, this guy's just riding around. They do an exceptional job. It's a tough job, but they do it well. Cameras are going to help.
That's right, these cameras are going to definitely help, so thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Just curious, have all the recreation centers been, cameras been installed?
Not all of them. We still have about nine sites that we're still working on. And so we're hoping that within the next couple of months, we'll have all that, everything taken care of.
Okay, great, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, we have been talking for months now about the honorary naming of city streets and wanted to just kind of give you an update of where we are in terms of some proposed criteria that we want to just mention. The current ordinance allows for the renaming of existing city streets to honor the memory of any person that's living or deceased. But of course, it does not change the official street address, name, or any of that. The current process that we use in terms of the honorary street naming, first of all, the request can come from anyone. It can come from the mayor, council, city representatives, the public. And it goes then to the clerk of council. The application is sent to the responsive department just to make sure that there are no conflicts in terms of what they're looking to do in term, in the honorary naming. The clerk places the honorary naming request on her agenda, and it's brought forward to council for action. If you approve it, then the clerk of council forwards it to the honor board for them to consider and then, of course, make that recommendation, which then comes back to you. The recommendation will then come with a corresponding resolution, if it's appropriate. And then, of course, it's placed on the clerk's agenda with meeting minutes to reflect their decision to bring it forward back to you. Many of the requests that we receive, of course, are for public facilities, amenities. But today, we're dealing with just that of the honorary naming, street naming. But of course, we get all kinds of requests in, from trees to benches to other things. But again, we're dealing with today these naming of honorary streets. Since 2005, we've had about 16 requests for the renaming of streets. And so you can see how they have been from, you know, one a year to up to three a year for those various years, even up through just last year where we had three honorary requests that came before you. Once it comes to city council for that designation, the traffic engineer is then authorized to erect appropriate signage in a color that's distinguishable from the standard signs. Of course, that's once you've given the approval of that. Signs are then purchased by the individual or the organization that requested that sign. They have to pay for that sign. And then, of course, we go in and we install it. But what we'd like to share with you is proposed criteria moving forward on what it could look like in terms of this process. And so we think and feel that the name should reflect Columbus values and community interest. It should also be named for an individual living or dead that provided credible service to the community and has attained prominence locally based on their contributions to the public. Also, it should be named to recognize a significant historical event or an individual. And the street name does not impact, again, the address or the official street name that is being considered. Only one street name designation sign will be allowed on any single, any single street sign pole from the city's standard street sign. The length of the designation shall be for five years, but can be renewed for two five-year periods, but must go back through the process. The honorary street name designation will be temporarily displayed for a period of five years unless otherwise approved by council. Upon request at any time, the honorary street name sign may be returned to the applicant or the representative with council's concurrence. So we will, after that five-year period, remove that sign, and we can certainly give it to them for display how they feel that they need to, because of course, they paid for it. In any event, at the end of the five-year period, the city will remove that sign, and then, of course, we will hand it over to the applicants. The honorary, the honoree must have resided in the city during his or her lifetime, during which time he or she will have preferably resided adjacent to or located on the city's street that they are specifying for the honorary designation. We don't want cumbersome, corrupted, modified, discriminatory, or derogatory names from the point of view of race, sex, color, creed, ethnicity, religious affiliation, political affiliation, or any other social factors that are not acceptable to be placed as names on these signs. If a community member or a group suggests names, they will be required to undertake the outreach effort within the community and document that name for a specific corridor, street location. Each honor, each honorary street designation request must be accompanied by a petition of at least 51% of property owners that are along that street. And so if you're coming forward with that request, you have to put the work in to make sure that it's not just one or two individuals who want that street or that person to have this honorary designation. We have to have at least 51% of those on the street that must agree. And a completed application should be submitted to the clerk of council outlining the contributions and the service of the individual that is being recommended for an honorary designation. And what I've passed around to you is just a copy of this draft application that a person would have to complete. It also shows on that back page the checklist that has to be, all those things kind of have to be checked off in order for it to meet the criteria for this honorary designation. Once a name is approved by city council, the city manager will designate and implement the approved name to be included in the appropriate signage, plaques, or dedication will then be erected. All the signage, again, any kind of fabrication and the actual installation, there are going to be fees associated with that. And so those who are making the request, the organization or the individual, they're going to be required to pay for that. It could be today that that sign, the fabrication and the installation labor could be $200, you know, whatever that is. Again, that's going to be based on, once engineering tells us what that cost will be. Five years from now, it may be a different cost, it may be more. But as of today's cost, it would be based on the material fabrication and the installation of those signs. So that's, again, this is all, anything that you would like to see changed, amended, added, removed, this is the opportunity, we want to do that. All of this is all draft form, and we are open to any of your suggestions.
Thank you, Deputy City Managers, good work. Councilor Woodson?
Thank you very much, this is really good. I have a question for you because I don't know if I missed it. Like, for instance, you have religious organization pastors that are, been in a church and have been in a community for a while, and their congregation wants to honor them with this, with this item. How will we handle them? Because then in the sentence says they have to live in Muskogee County or be, or lived in that area. Is that correct? How will we handle a situation like that?
Well, I think, you know, one thing, because you're going to have, you have a lot of, you know, ministers or pastors who have moved into the community and, of course, or a particular church, but they have no other ties to the community. And so if you've just come in, you've been here for five years, and your congregation really loves you, and they want that designation, does that necessarily mean that you meet the criteria just because you served for five years at that particular church? So I think you have to check all the boxes to make sure that you have that, you're ingrained in the community, not just kind of getting here, if you will, so.
Just wanted to make sure for those, you know, watching would understand. Because I, there's been some in the past. And so I'm just wondering how, going forward, it's a different process, and they need to understand that.
Because you have many that, of course, want to see their religious leader's name in lights and be able to have it. But they still have to meet that criteria, and that criteria basically is listed on the last page. Those boxes really need to be checked. Otherwise, we'll have everybody want to have a honorary designation.
Okay, thank you, just want to clarify that.
Councilor House, did you have anything? Okay, all right. Appears it to be all the, all the questions. I know we've got one presentation left, but we are, we need to go into executive session, and we cannot do so unless we have a quorum. Now, in all likelihood, we will not have a quorum to exit executive session, which means we will probably declare the meeting adjourned. But it also means we won't come back on camera because we won't go back into regular session. We'll just adjourn from, from.
So Mayor, I can cancel the last update or bring it back at the next meeting from the Finance Director?
I think that would be good, that way we could go ahead.
Just postpone it.
Yeah. All right, well, we need, we're still one shy of a quorum. Yep. Mr. City Attorney?
Well, Mayor, one second here. Is there a problem with that? Okay, we'll work it out. Okay, Mayor.
The request would be for personnel and litigation.
Yes, I'm sorry, it's for pers, yeah, we go into executive, we had a request to go into executive session to discuss personnel and litigation. And we'll entertain a motion to do so.
Second.
Motion and a second. So we will be in executive session, and if we do not have a quorum, we will not reappear back on camera because we will not be able to exit the executive session, all right? All in favor, say aye. All right, we are in executive session.